And Pastor Jackson and Pastor Flores, would you mind leading us in invocation?
Thank you, Mayor. Gracias. Por favor, todos levántate if we could all stand. Let us pray. Gracious God, you are a good God. Gracias por este privilegio, esta oportunidad para participar en esta ciudad. We thank you for this privilege to participate in your city, this city of Baldwin Park. We ask Father for your grace, your mercy, which are new every morning. Lord, we pray for cities, nations, Lord, that are in peril, that are in exile, that are fleeing, Lord, because of destruction. We pray for your grace, your mercy, your peace. Thank you for our city. Gracias a Dios por esta ciudad y la liderazgo de esta ciudad, la policía y todos, Señor. Ayuda, por favor, Señor, todo para su honra y su gloria, en el nombre de Jesucristo. Amen.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you right now in the name of the Lord, in giving you praise, glory, honor, and thanksgiving. We thank you, Father, for our city council, our mayor. We thank you for our police department and our fire department, and all of those that are working together to make this city great. We're asking, Father God, in touching our school district, Lord God, in touching our children and our teachers, Father. Father, we see that it's a problem with homelessness in our city and all around. We're asking you, Lord God, in opening up doors and making a way for those that are homeless. We're asking you, Father, in touching our businesses, Lord, that our business will flourish here in Baldwin Park. And I ask the pastor to stay here because we are pastors of this city, and we're standing together in unity and in one accord as pastors, and also representing the city, that the city will stand together in one accord. Because when we do come together in oneness, God commands blessings upon us. And this city, we're asking the Lord to bless it in every way. And we ask this in the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
Sam, it's Public Works Week. Do you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, Mayor, I'd be happy to. Everyone rise? Right hand over your heart. Ready?
I'm gonna lift the flag. United States of America. Liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. You can take a seat. City Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. We, the city council, discussed several items in closed session. They took no final action on any of the closed session items, therefore, there's no reportable action, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that, City Attorney. Chief Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, the city clerk could not make it today, and she did ask to be excused. And additionally, council member Avila and council member Hernandez will not be joining us today.
Great. So I'll make a motion to excuse all three members of the council, including the city clerk. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? City Clerk, continue, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien?
Here.
And Mayor Estrada?
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. A important announcement. Oh, and then don't forget Mari Contreras, who is here today with us. Hi, Marie, how are you doing?
I'm hanging in there.
Great. Well, it's great to hear from you. Glad to have you with us today.
Thanks. Wouldn't miss it.
So, an important announcement. The city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. Now, we move forward to our proclamations, commendations, and presentations, and we do have a lupus proclamation and a fibromyalgia proclamation for Juana Mata, who is an advocate from Looms for Lupus. And if the Looms for Lupus team can join me up here, that would be great. So, Fibromyalgia Awareness Month, May 2022. Fibromyalgia is a complex chronic illness which causes fatigue, cognitive problems, and debilitating pain in women, men, and children of all ages and races. Over four million people in the United States, two to four percent of the population, and millions of people worldwide, have been diagnosed with fibromyalgia, a disease for which there is no known cure. And whereas existing public information, medical education, research, and resources to properly serve patient communities remain inadequately disseminated and are insufficient in addressing the needs of specific diverse populations and other underserved groups, fibromyalgia often takes an average of three to five years to receive a diagnosis of fibromyalgia. And fibromyalgia is present in children and young adults, which poses unique challenges for this population, who will not only struggle with the symptoms of this illness, but also from the lack of understanding and lack of social acceptance. And whereas increased public awareness, education, and research are the key to winning the battle against fibromyalgia, the support, Fibromyalgia Network, Looms for Lupus, have joined to advocate for fibromyalgia awareness, support, and a better future for research, treatment, diagnosis, and education. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, council members Alejandro Avila, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Fibromyalgia Awareness Month, and urge residents to help raise awareness throughout the City of Baldwin Park. May 2022 is also Lupus Awareness Month. Whereas systemic lupus erythematosis, commonly known as lupus, is a chronic, complex, and often life-threatening autoimmune disease that randomly attacks the body's own tissues and vital organs, including the kidneys, brain, heart, lungs, blood, skin, and joints. It is a leading cause of premature cardiovascular disease, kidney disease, and stroke among young women, and it is estimated that there are over 322,000 to 1.5 million people with lupus in the United States. However, men, children, and teenagers develop lupus too. Lupus is two to three times more common, and its symptoms tend to be more severe among African Americans, Hispanics, Latinos, Native Americans, and Asians than Caucasians. Ninety percent of people who have lupus are women, typically diagnosed during childbearing years, ages 15 through 44. And whereas increasing public awareness and focusing on public attention on lupus and its devastating impact on patients' lives will provide hope for a better future for those affected, lupus impacts more than just the life of the patient. It affects their family, friends, coworkers, employers, and the community as a whole. The need for increased public and professional awareness and its devastating impact on patients' lives will provide hope for a better future for those affected. And lupus is one of the most difficult diseases to diagnose because its symptoms come and go, mimic other diseases, and there is no single test that can definitively identify the illness. Early diagnosis and proper treatments are critical to the improvement of the quality of life. Therefore, increased public awareness, education, and research are key to winning the battle against lupus. And whereas Looms for Lupus works to raise awareness of the signs and symptoms of lupus and to promote education, research, social support, and quality medical care for our citizens who live with or care for someone who struggles with this disease. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, council members Alejandro Avila, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Lupus Awareness Month, and urge residents to help raise awareness throughout the City of Baldwin Park.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and city council members, and Mayor Pro Tem. We are Looms for Lupus. We, my sister lives with lupus, and I live with fibromyalgia, and there are way too many people that are still undiagnosed. And what Looms for Lupus does, we are locally here in the community. We provide support. We provide awareness. We also provide information in English and in Spanish that includes the support groups every second Saturday of the month and every second Sunday of the month, and this is for the community. And we want to raise awareness, continue to let people know that there are so many symptoms that we need to look for. It impacts our community members, and we are here to support you. So you can visit our website at www.loomsforlupus.org. Thank you.
Yeah, and before I want to take, before we take a nice picture, I do want to thank Looms for Lupus, who are local to Baldwin Park and have, you know, broad awareness to very important invisible diseases and illnesses that we are, we can't see, but we feel, and affect our community. They affect our family. They affect the people that are around us, our loved ones, and our neighbors. This is very important that we talk about these things, especially as underserved communities, working-class communities, and people of color. It's important that we put a priority on health, help educate our community as to why it is important to have access to healthcare. I don't know if you are aware or not, but two-thirds of American bankruptcies are due to medical emergencies. So it's very important that, as communities, we come together to advocate for this type of information. So I want to thank you for doing all that hard work, because it does make a difference in all of our lives.
Thank you.
And I believe we have the Mojico Judo Club with us. Is that correct? Not. We'll hold on to this one. But in the meantime, I'll read it. So it is Kids to Parks Day, May 21, 2022, which is in a couple of days. May 21, 2022, is the 12th Annual National Kids to Park Days, organized and launched by the National Park Trust. Kids to Park Days empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and it is important to introduce a new generation to our national parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades, and we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterol. And Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. So we do want to encourage our community to make sure that they take advantage of our green spaces and get excited, not just for state and national parks, but also for some of the new green spaces coming to our city, in the direction of our Parks and Recs Director, Manica Rio. And now, I'd like to welcome our Public Works team up here. Hey, there's a hat. You know what a hat is? All right. Nobody else? We have everybody up here? Where's Sam? Sam? This is your department.
Yeah, no.
You fit. Don't worry. You fit.
I thought I'd let him take the spotlight today, so.
Okay. May 15 through May 21, 2022, is Public Works Week. Whereas public works services provide, in our community, are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, sewers, storm drains, streetlights, traffic signals, graffiti abatement, environmental programs, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of the public infrastructure and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian, council members Alejandro Avila, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim May 15 through 21, 2022, as Public Works Week in the City of Baldwin Park, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life in our community. And so, before I let Public Works speak, I do want to acknowledge that Public Works does an immense job here in the City of Baldwin Park, and they take care of pretty much everything, and they partner with all of our other departments to make things happen, and they partner with our Parks and Recs when we have events to make sure that there's traffic flow. If there's an emergency, they also jump in, streetlights, pavement, potholes, painting, abatement, anything, including our tiny homes, which they took care of and made happen in a record time, which we're all excited for. Front row, I see you. And then, of course, if you were at our Mental Health Awareness Event, you saw our new police department patrol vehicles, and they were actually designed in-house by our Public Works Director. But they do a lot more than you think they do. So if you see them out there, be nice to them. They're very approachable, and they're some of my favorite people here in the City of Baldwin Park, because they keep it looking good. So I want to thank all of you for all the work you do. I know it's tough. I know that you work through some volatile weather conditions. So thank you for what you do, and we're very appreciative here in the City of Baldwin Park.
Mayor, I also want to thank our Public Works team, under the leadership of Sam Gutierrez, but all of you that certainly work hard every day to improve the quality of life here in the City of Baldwin Park. And I will say, I drive around Southern California quite often. I've been to a lot of different cities, and I always enjoy coming home to the streets that are paved and clean. You know, our street medians are always nice and manicured. On occasion, you know, but that's when you guys get the call right, and then you're on it. You're so responsive. Graffiti removal. I know, you know, there's always a lot of work to do with our graffiti removal, and just the parks, keeping all the facilities nice and clean. So definitely want to say thank you for all that you do to make our city really stand out, you know, in terms of its quality of life. It really, your contributions make such an impact, even for those residents that rely on public transportation, go to those bus benches, you know? I'm seeing some heads nod over there. You guys have been out there cleaning, especially during COVID, when it was a real public health concern. And so, like the mayor said, you know, whether it's rain, or whether it's rain or beautiful skies, your dedication is certainly appreciated because it does make an impact in our community and on the daily lives of our residents and business community. So thank you so much. I hope that you guys feel, you know, welcomed and appreciated here at the city, and, you know, we certainly do appreciate you. So can we give him another round of applause, please? I feel like these are the people that don't get enough recognition, right? So we definitely want to make sure that you guys have that tonight. So, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes. Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our Public Works team. Just know that you are appreciated. We appreciate all the work that you do for our community and for our residents. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, before I hand over the mic to our director, I do just want to acknowledge that there's also our Public Works team that works at the yard, and there's people like Joe who do maintenance to our vehicles, any city vehicle, including our PD. I know they do oil changes and other heavy repairs, so it's very important that we acknowledge how big and vital public works operations are to the City of Baldwin Park. But Sam, do you want to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the kind words. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for the kind words, and Councilmember Garcia, thank you so much for the kind words. I really want to stress out how proud I am personally to work with such a dedicated group of guys, and this year, one girl. Crystal joined the team recently, and she's already outperforming some of the guys. No, in all seriousness, these guys take their job seriously. They're very dedicated. They're here early. They take care of, as the mayor mentioned, and the council members mentioned, they take care of the traffic signals, they take care of potholes, street sweeping, you name it, landscaping, and transit buses. So they do a lot, and they're largely unseen, and they just want to make sure that the city's functioning properly for everybody to enjoy. I do want to recognize that, under the leadership of our maintenance manager, Anthony Vasquez, the group has gone through a lot of changes, a lot of positive changes, and we like what we're seeing. We've never been this tight-knit ever in the City of Baldwin Park, is what I understand, and that is good to see. So I'm immensely proud of these guys, and I just want to thank them from the bottom of my heart.
I just want to add what Sam was saying. I hate the recognition I get because I cannot do what I do without these guys and gal behind us, behind myself. My job's easy because I have great people who work behind me and great leadership by Sam. Like I said, I'm proud to say I work for the City of Baldwin Park and the Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Hey, thanks again. You up there? I miss you and your fright. I find you. Looks good.
Thank you, guys. I have two more.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, yeah, no, thanks. All right. Take care.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, really? Yeah. No, we appreciate you.
Thank you. And before I move on, I do want to comment, Sam. Sam, we're this close to bringing in our newest street sweeper, which I believe one of our drivers is currently being trained on, so I know that we're looking forward to that.
Yes, that's correct. So we have our new street sweeper operator in training right now in Texas, and the unit will be delivered in about a week and a half, and we'll have a brand-new street sweeper sweeping our streets.
And, you know, Public Works works very, very hard, and they're very diligent, and I know that they work very fast whenever there's a call or any sort of concern or complaint. But I do want to remind you all that it does take all of us to keep our city clean and beautiful and looking good. So if you see any sort of blight, any sort of, anything that needs abatement, any sort that needs a pickup, it is important that you get involved and that you call Public Works or our graffiti hotline so that they can go out there and take care of it. They're more than ready and willing to take care of things, but they are not, we're not going to be able to take care of something that we're not aware of. So very important that we all work together and show support for Public Works, not just this week, but every week of the year. And so now, I want to welcome our, up here, our Baldwin Park Police Officers for their oath of office, and that is Police Officer Thomas Ip, Police Officer Janay Moreno, Record Supervisor Joanne Casca, Records Clerk Anai Chavez, we have Parking Enforcement Gerardo Duennas, Parking Enforcement Jaime Barrera, and Parking Enforcement Andrew Franco. So we have Janay Moreno, Joanne Casca, Anai Chavez, Gerardo Duennas, Jaime Barrera, Andrew Franco, and Ricardo Bugarini. Jaime Barrera, Andrew Franco, and Ricardo Bugarini.
Good afternoon or good evening. I'd like to say a couple of words. And I know that there were some names mentioned on here. For one, it was Police Officer Thomas Ip. He was unable to join us just to sort of give you the understandings of the rigors and workload of an officer. He worked the past 18 hours and just due to fatigue and his wellness, we had asked him to go home and not be a part of this presentation. And another member was cadet, Police Cadet Herrera. She was in school. Part of the responsibilities of our cadets is that they go to college full-time as well as work for us part-time. So, because of her school schedule, she was unfortunately unable to attend. I'd like to say just a couple of words about the individuals in front of you. Just so you get an idea of who they are and who we've hired here with the City of Balden Park Police Department. I'd like to start off with Officer Janay Moreno. She has actually been with us since 2018. Formerly was a Police Explorer with Covina PD and was hired with us as a Police Cadet back in 2018. Moved over to our Parking Enforcement Officer Division, both part-time spots. And because of her work ethic and what we saw in her, we hired her full-time after she completed the Rio Hondo Police Academy in 2020. Next, I'd like to mention a couple of words about... I'd like to say a couple of words about also our new Record Supervisor, Joanne Gaska. She comes to us from Azusa Police Department and has roughly 16 years working with them. And what was a great pick-up for us is she has experience in our systems, meaning she has experience in dispatch with our CAD. It's an acronym for our Computer-Aided Dispatch, as well as records experience in our records management system. So, she brings with us, or to us, a wealth of knowledge. And upon just day one coming here, hit the ground running, has really unified the work efficiency in our records department. And I couldn't be prouder to have her as one of the supervisors that leads our records department. So, that's Joanne Gaska. Next, I'm going to mention all three in the Parking Enforcement Officer category. And that's going to be Officer Duennas, Parking Enforcement Officer Barrera, and our newest one, Parking Enforcement Officer Franco. With Duennas, he's been with us since 2015. So, he's been here quite a while as well as a Police Explorer. Was also a Police Cadet for the City of Balden Park since 2019. And recently, just this year, switched over to our Parking Enforcement Officer. Because of his hard work ethic and tenure here, we see good things coming from him, moving up the ranks. And probably within a couple of years, don't be surprised if you see him wearing a police department outfit. So, this would be Parking Enforcement Officer Duennas. What we like to call here is unofficial brother is Parking Enforcement Officer Barrera. They both started at the same time in 2015. Oddly enough, they both were hired as Police Cadets in 2019. And as you guessed, they both were hired at the same time to become Parking Enforcement Officers earlier this year. Just like Duennas, Barrera has aspirations to be a Police Officer. So, again, I could see both of them being hired around the same time in a few years. So, if you could, just another round of applause for Parking Enforcement Officer Barrera. Newest addition to the Parking Enforcement Officer Department is Officer Andrew Franco. He was just hired in April of 2022. Just literally started his training program in the Parking Enforcement Bureau this last week. And excited to pick him up. Has a wealth of knowledge. One of the distinctions I would like to mention because it's often not quite understood, but it takes quite an accomplishment to do, is he's earned the distinction of reaching the highest rank in the Boy Scouts of America and actually became an Eagle Scout. So, for those of you that don't know the rigors involved in that, it's actually quite impressive. He comes from a proud LAPD family where his father retired. And just like the other, all the individuals up here actually aspires to be, have a career in law enforcement as well. So, this was Parking Enforcement Officer Franco. Next, I'd like to mention our Police Cadet, Mr. Bugarini. He was hired in February of this year. He has been working in the city of Balden Park. I believe he came from Parks and Recs, worked there for a little bit and then came over to us. He loves helping mentoring children after school and like the rest, aspires to become a Police Officer. And I won't take up too much more time. So, last but certainly not least was another great hire of ours. This is Record Specialist Anai Chavez. Mrs. Chavez began, like a lot of the officers here do, which is good for us because it's almost like a recruitment pool for us. She began as a Police Explorer in 2016, was hired as a Police Cadet in 2019. And in October of 2021, I was proud to say I hired her as a Record Specialist. She actually also aspires to become a Police Officer. And with hers, as well as everyone else you see before you, their work ethic, sky's the limit. So, final round of applause for Record Specialist Anai Chavez. And if the family would like, at the mayor's request, you guys are allowed to come up here and take some photographs with your family and loved ones. So, feel free.
Oh, thank you. This is a community that has had a pretty positive rapport with our police department. And so, I think that you'll really enjoy building the community relations here in addition to the law enforcement, obviously, you know, that you're here to, to help the city with. But just want to say that Balden Park is a wonderful community. I'm so glad to see the city family expanding. And I think that that's what you'll find being here at the city of Balden Park is that it's very family-oriented, very community-oriented. I encourage you to look at it from that lens as well, in addition to your training in law enforcement. So, appreciate that you're here and I'm sure that your family is so proud of all of you. And we want to acknowledge your commitment to getting these individuals here today before us and bringing them up in a way, in an exceptional way, that now they're part of our family.
I'm Chief Bob Lopez and I'm very honored to be here tonight to welcome the new addition to our department. If you look at how we're going, we're moving in a great direction. We have hired additional folks. And it's through the leadership of the City Council that has allowed us to hire additional people. I'm very proud to work for this organization that is forward-thinking and allowing us to move forward. But what you're looking at is the future of Balden Park Police Department. We'll make sure that you acknowledge them. And when you see them out there, please thank them for their commitment to the city and the commitment to the community because I think that's very important. So, hats off to everybody here. Thank you for your commitment to us. You know, and Joe, I thank you for, you know, I've thrown a lot of stuff at you in the recent days, but I want to thank you guys all for everything that you do for me to make this department what it is today. So, thank you to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I definitely, I want to echo the comments of my colleagues and the chief and everybody here. We're very excited to grow our police department and share your history and how you are, most of you, not all of you, have a connection to the San Gabriel Valley or neighboring cities, or even to the department itself. Some of you started as cadets, some of you started explorers and you've grown little by little. But you are an integral part of the police department. We're very excited about that. I think it's something that we should pride ourselves on and share with the community as well, especially during these times. And really share the approachability that all of you have. And I think that's one of the things that I respect most about our PD. I see them through the streets and I recognize most of you and I can say hi to you and I think that's great. Officer Moreno, if you want to come over here real quick. Officer Moreno is one of our newest ones, but she's also one of our toughest. And I just want to commend her. So, every time I see Officer Moreno, I tell her that I see her on TV. And we did. So, Officer Moreno has been a part of some pursuits. And, you know, we've seen that she is committed to her job and she is diligent on it. And she does the job thoroughly and we're very proud of that. And we're very thankful because it shows your commitment to your position. And we're very grateful for that because you're keeping us safe. I just wanted to thank you and commend you in front of everybody. And then, of course, I do want to commend all of our other officers who are just as dedicated and have been here for a long time. And you guys are going to have some records to break, but I'm sure you'll be here with longevity. So, I want to thank all of you as well that are already here. And, yeah. And not only for being here, but also because you are setting the example for the new generation of law enforcement. So, thank you for that. So, Mayor Protem, if you have any comments, I'm going to hand over the floor to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to welcome our newest Police Officers, Parking Enforcement Officers and Record Specialists. It's exciting to see that our police department is moving in the right direction. We are moving forward. We're employing a lot of Police Officers. Want to make sure that, you know, we're giving you guys the tools and the resources that you guys need to make your jobs easier. So, again, welcome to the city of Balden Park and we're excited to have you.
Oh, my God.
Alright.
Oh man, that was nice. No, now let's get down to business.
So continuing on, I will open, I will move to open a public communication. Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Um yes Mayor, we have Arthur Monreal.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm here to talk about the America's Job Center. We are a county-funded workforce development agency. We are here in the city of La Puente, our comprehensive center. We also have a satellite office that we have here at the Baldwin Park Adult School. And what we're here to do is to help two main customers, the job seekers and the businesses in the city of Baldwin Park. I'm really amazed by the commitment that the council and the officers of the city of Baldwin Park have for their community. It's an amazing city to work with. I've worked in workforce development for about 15 years in all the different cities I've worked in. Baldwin Park is one of those rare cities where they not only want to help their clients, they ask for help. They work with us whenever we ask for something, the city of Baldwin Park responds and that's an amazing thing. Today I want, I am here to talk to you about the Baldwin Park Live Job Fair that is going to be happening on May 26th at the Esther Snyder Community Center. We are having about 40 live employers ready to interview and hire. We have manufacturing, we have security, we have healthcare. We have all of the growing sectors that are part of the LA County workforce. We actually are here to invite the officers and the city council, mayor, city attorney, anybody that wants to come out and see what we can do to help the people of Baldwin Park. We really welcome you to be there. I'm free to answer any questions that you may have about what we have going on and the work that we're doing. Also, you would see a press release that was published in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune and the Southern California News Group this afternoon announcing it. So is there any questions that you might have? No? Okay. Well, thank you so much for letting me speak. Thank you.
The next speaker who signed up is Catherine Lozier.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem and members of the council. Our summer plans are being fine tuned, so I'll bring that to you next session. But our National Asian Pacific American Heritage Month celebration continues. We have a few more virtual programs in the next week and so. On Tuesday, May 24th, for families and children, we have Reading Fun with award-winning author Selena Yoon. She'll be sharing her tips and tricks for finding inspiration everywhere and she will go over how she developed three of her books and then you'll be able to draw along with her as she demonstrates how she draws some of her favorite characters. And then on Tuesday, May 31st at 4:00 PM, we have Tale of the Lucky Cat. Another author and illustrator, Sunny Sakai and his wife and translator Judy will be exploring Japanese culture with the reading of his book, The Tale of the Lucky Cat, which is a retelling of a beloved Japanese fairy tale or folk tale. And he'll be demonstrating traditional Japanese toys. For teens and adults, we will have the San Gabriel Valley Asian Pacific Islander LGBTQ plus P flag organization that will be coming to talk about what their mission is and resources for those who are API and LGBTQ plus. That will be Wednesday, May 25th at 6:00 PM. And then the last program that I'll be speaking on tonight is a program for adults called Resilience Culture and Community with the Center for Pacific Asian Family. They'll be leading a workshop exploring the topics of culture and family dynamics, leadership development and the impact of domestic violence and sexual violence. But also talking about community resiliency. And that again will be Thursday, May 26th at 5:00 PM. Thank you so much. And if you have any questions about any of our programs or services, you can always find me at the Baldwin Park Library or visit us online at lapl.org. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our speaker cards.
Great. Okay, if there's anybody looking to speak without filling out the card, now's your time.
Thank you. Welcome, city council, chief of police and members here, constituents. My name is Dolores Holgian and I'm a current resident of the city of Baldwin Park and have been for over 33 years. In addition, I'm a retired law enforcement officer with over 40 years in law enforcement, serving both local and state agencies. I am here to comment on a concern that I have regarding an item listed on your agenda earlier this evening. One, on your Baldwin Park special meeting agenda, you lose to litigation with six current Baldwin Park Police Department officers versus the city of Baldwin Park. It was just heartening, to say the least, to see that our city is again embroiled in yet another lawsuit. But more concerning was that it involves the department, police department, again. It was alarming to me as a retired law enforcement officer of over 40 years to have that many current Latino, and let me stress again, Latino, police officers, I might add suing our city. I utilized my investigative ability and obtained the case which was filed in Superior Court for the county of Los Angeles. Your agenda item lists the case number as 2-2, C is in Charles, V is in Victor. Pardon me. 2-2, S is in Sam, T is in Tom, C is in Charles, V is in Victor, 1-4, 1-2-1. The complaint for damages includes discrimination, harassment retaliation and hostile work environment. Failure to prevent discrimination, violation of rights protected under government code 33000. Declaratory relief is alarming to me that officers who are not, let me emphasize that, not trainees, that are seasoned, well-versed, knowledgeable, trained veteran law enforcement personnel who have at a minimum 120 years in law enforcement collectively are being forced to bring a lawsuit again to the city of Baldwin Park with these charges. The lawsuit is scathing. It documents quite clearly and describes numerous situation where these officers recount their mistreatment. Based on these complaints for damages against our city, many questions and red flags arise.
I'm sorry, your time-
Having police officers, more specifically-
Excuse me?
Specifically, I'm not done.
Your time is up.
Specifically Latino police officers made any complaints regarding discrimination in the workplace. What does that process entail?
So we don't want to stop-
Who may want to rethink it?
Excuse me, so-
Who appears flawed, considering that the city of Baldwin Park paid over $4.9 million to our former chief? How can they allow these responsible to remain in their administrative positions? Just putting a new face at the helm is not a remedy for this situation. How can our department allow people to continue working in authority after the blatant racial discrimination, comments and actions as described in this suit? Both alarming and blatantly wrong. I am not done. I will be back.
That's fine. So, thank you. So we definitely want to hear everybody's concerns. However, everybody is limited to three minutes. Yes, so everybody's, everybody's limited to, yeah, everybody's limited to three minutes. Thank you. Yes. So I do want to remind everybody that everybody is limited to three minutes. We are here to hear your concerns and you are also welcome to reach out to the council and myself if you'd like to have a meeting discussing any-
Hello, city council residents in Baldwin Park. Thank you for showing up today. The rest of the city council, I don't know where they live. Maybe they live in Siberia, who in the hell knows? One thing you people that are here, inflation's going up. Jobs are being cut back. So where are you guys going to get all this money to pay all these recruits you just hired? I know, taxing poor residents of Baldwin Park, what else? You know, you think you could tax the corporations? They get the same thing we get. Taxed after tax, tax. You people are ridiculous. You look at me like, oh, he don't know what he's talking about. Half of the people in this city are probably on a fixed income and you people can't get that. I don't care if you raise it one penny or five cents, it's a lot of money over the years. You're not spending your money very wisely. I know, keep looking at all the figures you want, but you're not spending any money doing any good. You hired all these people, how are you gonna pay them? I know, Uncle Sam helped. He's taxing the heck out of us. Sacramento's taxing us. They got a big surplus. Where in the hell's that do you, hasn't do you any good, hasn't done me any good? Gas is getting ridiculous. And wow, we'll go ahead and tax the residents of Baldwin Park. It's okay. We don't need no tax increase, especially right now. Two years ago, the virus took care of all the raises. You guys, oh, it's down a little bit. It's starting up again. Other countries have worse because they didn't take and have the shots. Well, you people got to remember, we're inflation, man, it's gonna go sky high. It ain't gonna get better. The people in Russia don't help. At city council, you don't help either. The other two that aren't here shouldn't even be paid. You people were elected to be here and be paid working here. There's no stipulation that says you can stay home and get paid. I know, you made your own goddamn rules. Lawyer, you would have better knowledge. I don't know why we have you if you don't protect the citizens of Baldwin Park. You only protect those five people. You don't protect all of us. What good are you if you do not protect all of us? Yeah, you, I'm looking right at you. Mayor, where are the rest of the city council? You don't have an answer. Where does it say-
Your time is up, sir.
You guys can stay home and get paid.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Where? Show it to me in this paperwork that you put out.
Your time is up. Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Rios, resident. I want to praise Public Works. They've, in the past, I would say, year, year and a half, they did 80 to 160. The city's looking better and better every day. I see the guys working, you know. I see them work at the parks and everything. I see them in the streets and everything. The only problem that I have right now, anytime that I want to talk to, especially Anthony, he's very good. But he's always in meetings, Sam. We need to get a supervisor for Anthony. In between the public and everything. But other than that, you know, like I said, you know, those guys are busting their butts. We have a problem at Warner Creek. Manny and Maria are aware of it. Maria met with me about the fence facing the riverbed. You know, right away she said, no, no, we gotta get some money to fix this. I hope you guys do fix it. As I told Maria, he's gonna get, that somebody's gonna fall through there, through the fence. And we don't, we don't want to come out in the news. You know, that somebody got killed or somebody is under the gravel or whatever, okay? But like I say, you know, Public Works, number one. I've talked to Enrique too and everything and he's pushing the city in the right direction. Thank you. You know, everything we talk about and everything, what I see and everything, you know, it's, I do it for the community. Because we want to be number one in the valley. You know, and it's going that way. Mayor, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Is there anybody else looking to speak? No, not, um, I will move to close public communication. I do just want to remind everybody that there is rules of decorum here in the council chambers. By all means, everybody has the same amount of time to come up to the dais and, and you know, say and express whatever they feel they need to express. At some point before I was mayor, I was one of those people. And so I just want to remind everybody that we just have to follow the rules. You can say, you have those three minutes to yourself, but once that three minutes is up, we do need you to be respectful of everybody's time and the rules of decorum, making sure that we keep this place in order. So just a quick reminder. I don't know if any other, my colleagues have any comments. If not, we can move on to our consent calendar.
Mayor, I just quickly want to acknowledge Catherine and Arthur for the resources that you'll be providing at separate events on May 26th and thank you for your contribution to the community. You know, in the ways that you provide it, it's appreciated. And anytime that we can serve our community and, you know, with the library services or job fairs, it's a good day. So May 26th, it looks like it's gonna shape up to be a really good day. Thank you for your contribution. And then as far as if there were any questions regarding zooming in to the council meetings, there is an item on the agenda, item number 11. And it does specifically relate to board meetings that are held remotely in accordance with the Brown Act Executive Order and AV 361, if anybody's interested in taking a closer look at that. That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, we will move on to our consent calendar. Say councils, are there any items you are looking to pull? Not, I will pull item number four and just make a motion to pass items number one through eleven. Can I get a second?
Mayor, just really quick for clarification, the, the subsequent needed item, C C twelve A, is this part of now the consent calendar?
Subsec, oh, city attorney, we do need to add a subsequent item, right?
Ah, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Just have one moment so I can pull that up. I'm sorry, Ms. Morales, do you have the email that you, I think you sent it to me, didn't you, that had the staff report? Some reason it's not popping up for me. Hold on just a minute. Thank you. Thank you, Manny. Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. We do have a subsequent need item. I would like to, if it's passed, place it on the agenda as item twelve A. There's an urgency to add this to the consent calendar regarding a one's eleven Entertainment Inc., so that they can provide musical entertainment at the downtown street market. This need arose after the agenda was printed and noticed to the public. As a result of that, and because there's a time deadline to this, in order to get this entertainment group to be contracted and be able to perform at the downtown street market, that creates the urgency, and there is a foundation for urgency on this item. Because we have three council members, Mr. Mayor, that have formed the quorum tonight, in order to put this on the agenda, you would need a unanimous vote of all three members present. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'll make a motion to add said item as item number twelve A. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Garcia. Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes. Oh, sorry. I don't even know who I am anymore.
And Mayor Estrada.
Yes. Thank you for that. So item is subsequently added. The, it just becomes a regular part of our consent calendar, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. It's now part of the consent calendar for the record is twelve A.
Great, so I believe I'll pull item number four, number nine, and Councilmember Garcia will pull item number ten, so I'll make a motion to pass items one through twelve A, excluding four, nine, and ten. Can I get a second? City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia. Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada.
Yes, thank you for that. And so item number four, I know that we do have Goodwill, and so I just wanted to bring this up, I think it's very, it's a very neat, it's a very neat project that we're, that we're working on together. I know that it's a, something that's been on the priority list for the council, and so it's very nice when council can come together and agree on something, and I think that's very important. It's offering opportunities, not just to Baldwin Park residents, but also our youth. So, now, if anybody has any questions regarding the program, I believe now is the time, so I just wanted to double check, does anybody have any questions or concerns? If not, just make a motion to pass item number four, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada.
Yes, thank you for that. And we do have item number nine, which is a request for consideration of a recommendation of approval to the city council regarding commercial cannabis agreements. I know that we have Julia here. Julia, do you mind maybe speaking on the C C A? I know it's a whole different process than we're used to, just so that we're all aware of our, a little bit of how things are changing from the, I believe we used to do a D A, now we're doing a C C A.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, this evening, we'd like you to consider the adoption and approval of a commercial cannabis agreement, and it is an agreement to allow Baldwin Park Distribution LLC to operate a distribution company here at one-four-oh-three-oh Live Oak Avenue. We have been in communications and negotiations with this company for a couple of months, and we recommend approval. We think it would be a good service to provide to the city, and it would provide much-needed revenues. We have a representative here also from Baldwin Park Distribution, if you want to have him speak.
No, it's okay, unless any other council members do, but I just wanted to bring this item up. This is our first C C A moving away from our D A after months of diligence and making sure that every council member had a say in how we moved this.
This is considered a non-statutory, non-mitigation fee, fully negotiated arms-length transaction where the applicant has agreed to pay the fee on their own free will.
Yes, so I think it's a pretty big deal. This is our first distributor, and it took a little bit longer than we'd like it to, but I think that now we're, it's incredibly comfortable now to be able to approve this, and being able to explain to the community how we came to this point, although it took a little bit longer than I, than we, than we would like it to, so I do want to thank these and their stakeholders for being patient with us and working with the city. So I just wanted to bring that up. I think it is a pretty big deal. We're, it's our first C C A, and first of many more to come, I believe. So I just, if, does any other council member have any questions, comments, or concerns? Not, I'll make a motion to pass item number nine, can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada.
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Garcia, item number ten, you have the floor.
Yeah, so, this is, goes back to our lengthy conversation in buddy session earlier, and I just wanted to pull the item and express my concern about not having the background checks. It's all in the name of public safety for me. I'm not at a comfort level with the screening process, especially if we can't exclude individuals that have a criminal history of sex offenses. And so, that would be my greatest concern. I have no problem with credit history and credit checks. That is a no-brainer for the population that we're serving, for the community that we're serving, and the people. But when it comes to the, you know, any criminal record, specifically for me, related to sex offenses, sexual predator, that's where I really am concerned about having control at the site and, you know, being able to create a community that we serve and that is so vulnerable as it is, you know, and creating an environment that's safe and healthy, productive. So I, I just wanted to pull this item and express my concern and express my opposition to the funding that would eliminate the background checks.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I also shared the same concerns initially when, you know, I found out that in order for us to receive this funding, you know, we had to do away with, you know, the background checks. However, you know, we have, as you guys know, Esperanza Villa, the tiny home village, was something that, you know, was just open in November of last year, so we're probably about half a year in. I visited the site, I've spoken to the residents there, and it's unfortunate that the majority of the residents that we do have at Esperanza Villa are seniors. You know, they're very grateful for the opportunity that we gave them to be able to get them off the streets and house them. So for me, it came down to three things. We had three options, the way I seen it. It was either we have this beautiful facility that we worked so hard to get up and running, and now it just stalls because of lack of funding. Number two, we basically try to obtain the seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars from our general fund, or number three, we go with the recommendation to receive this funding from L A S A, but do away with the background checks. I think since we've opened up the tiny home village, we've only had two participants that have been kicked out for not following the rules. So even though we will not have background checks starting in November of this year, the participants will be screened, there is twenty-four-hour security, and they are monitored. So if they are not abiding by the rules, they will be kicked out of the facility. So for me, I, you know, my priority is to shelter these unhoused neighbors that are residents or were residents of Baldwin Park and are living in our streets. To me, it's, it's more important to be able to give them that ability and that opportunity to be able to move on into a more of a permanent housing solution. So in this particular case, you know, I would be in support of obtaining the grant funding from L A S A so that we don't have to tap into our general fund, and this way, we can continue with Esperanza Villa for year two. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you for that. And so I, I do want to just acknowledge everybody's concerns. I know that there's a lot of conversation about how to do things and, you know, learning from everybody else and best practices. I think we're the only city that's actually doing the background check. I, I personally, I mentioned this earlier, but I'll mention it again, I personally work with domestic violence victims and, and doing intake processes with them, and, and sometimes they have children, sometimes they don't, sometimes they have five, sometimes they have one. But even then, background checks are not the norm. And I, somebody who works in that field firsthand, I haven't seen any sort of dangerous aspects here in the, in the tiny home village, I believe, and not only the first one, but also the second one, I'm sure we'll have rules that don't allow anybody that's not in that unit to be in that unit. Our restrooms are also individuals, so, you know, there's only one person per, and these restrooms are not multi, multi-use for, for multiple individuals at once. So, to me, it's, it's important that we look at the pros and cons of all of this, and a lot of these residents, if not all of them, which I believe all of them are Baldwin Park residents, so they are here and they, they need the help, and, you know, I spend a lot of time as well at the, at the villa I visit every so often, at least every other month, check in with staff and see how they're doing. For the most part, I don't believe that there's been any serious issues, and it's also a very important discussion to have where, when we first opened up Esperanza Villa, we were trying our best to make sure that we could house the people that were on the street. And when we look at our statistics, we see that it's fifty to sixty percent of seniors that are actually housing, that are being housed here, and yes, some of them were on the streets, but also some of these individuals have been actually, they, they've been protected and prevented from being, from ending up on the streets, and I know that when we were volunteering, I met one of them. This individual, he was renting a room from a family that was renting a house, when that house, when the landlord asked that family to vacate the home, they in turn had to ask him to vacate the room, and he would have nowhere to go. So this was actually a preventative measure for him to have somewhere to go by the time that he had to empty out the facility. So, there is a, I think that there's a very important conversation that we should be having around Esperanza Villa, not just amongst our council, but also with our community and showing them the great things that it's done. You know, seventy, I think we said seventy-seven years old was the first case. Seventy-seven years old and you're living on the streets, I think that is, you know, it's, it's complicated, just being, I mean, at the age of seventy-seven, you're not just seventy-seven, you're, you're facing health issues, you're facing, you know, the, the need and, and making sure that you have a support system. So, there's, there's an important discussion to have amongst Esperanza Villa, and it really actually expands the conversation that we need to have, where it's not just us having to take care of the homeless and, you know, people that are raggedy clothes or, or looking dirty. It's people that look like you and me, and they, they keep themselves hygiene, then you might not know it, but they're, they're struggling and they need that help. So, I, I am in support as well, I want to make sure that we keep helping these people and pushing forward and being a leader, and so far, we have been, we've been a leader here in, not just in the, in the San Gabriel Valley, but also to the region in general. I just, I along with some of the staff members, visited Montebello today, where they opened up their first tiny home project, so other cities are following suit, and we're also setting the example for other cities, like Hawthorne and Alabou, if I'm not mistaken. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty big deal here in the city of Baldwin Park. It should be, and I do think that it's something that we need to continue, necessary, and, and I'm going to support that. So, I'll make a motion to pass item number ten. Very second.
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia. Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada.
Yes. For that, and so we move to city council acting as a successor agency of the dissolved community development commission consent calendar. I'll make a motion to pass that consent calendar, can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada.
Yes. And then we have our Baldwin Park Finance Authority regular meeting, and I believe we have a consent calendar. And so I'll make a motion to pass that consent calendar, can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes.
Thank you for that, oh.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada.
Yes. And then we have our Baldwin Park Housing Authority regular meeting. And so, then we have one item, and I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar, can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien.
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada.
Yes, thank you for that, City Clerk. And then we move on, and I don't believe we have any, any comments or requests, but I did want to ask just to make sure that we do decorate the memorial for Memorial Day, put a nice decoration there to commemorate our veterans. And I don't know if any other council members have any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, I will move to adjourn the meeting, can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? If not, the, meeting is adjourned, good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.